It's the only piece of paper I took off your desk, though.
Okay. I take it there's a bunch there. Oh, okay. It didn't say?
No. Yeah.
All right.
You know, it'd be a real big favor to me after I leave that the agenda envelopes instead of being purple, we change it to kind of a crimson shade.
Nope, sorry.
Oh.
Purple is the rule of the day.
I'll be back.
No. Thank you.
Do you know what that reaction was going to be?
Of course, that's why I did it.
I asked it.
What a great parade, had many people come in.
Yeah, me too. Really fun. I almost touched the ground.
Anybody else have allergies?
Oh, up on my desk, right there, there's a little plastic box that have a lot of things.
The meeting will come to order. Your call, please.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember Boney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
He's on his way.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm trying to make a comment, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm here, thank you.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Wells? Councilmember Trump Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Excused. Okay, are there any announcements, reports, or presentations from the council?
Your Honor, an updated version of Resolution Ordinance 6740, who are invited to counsel on the papers.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go to Agenda Item 3A, Updating City Code Relating to Restraint and Registration of Potentially Dangerous Dogs. Hi there.
So Mark, County Assistant Chief of Police, you should have all have received in your packets the proposed ordinance. This is pursuant to a change in Washington State law that was passed earlier in April of this year prohibiting local jurisdictions from having breed-specific languages regarding potentially dangerous or dangerous dogs absent certain requirements. So what we did on staff recommendations is provided samples, removing the breed-specific language that's currently in our ordinance. It's still, the language that's proposed still provides requirements as far as a dog owner can, if their dog is declared dangerous or potentially dangerous, they can still go to through an AKC-registered class. I don't know the exact title, but a good behavior-type class, and provide proof of that so that they don't have to register their dog as potentially dangerous under our city ordinance.
Any questions from the council? I have one. So what is the language changes that are different from what we have in code now and what's in the state statute?
So what we did, you should have received that in your packets. We removed all references under the potentially dangerous dog section that was breed-specific, that it, that an animal owner would have to register their dog as potentially dangerous just based solely on their breed. So that language was removed. We've also added language regarding if they bring in paperwork to show that their, their dog that was declared potentially dangerous has met the requirements of the AKC. I believe it's called the Good Behavior Program. Bring that in and so they can have that registration requirement removed for a period of time.
Can, can you, can the police department have a red line changes from our current code? I mean, showing?
It's on your desk, it's on your desk.
Oh, is this, does this do it?
Yeah.
Is it annotated or?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is redlined. Perfect. All right, perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that. This is all we need?
I have a question. Did we go out and look what other cities have done? Because I know this is on just about everybody's agenda as well because of how our state governor has issued this. And so the reason why I'm asking is because my brother in the Tri-Cities said that their city, Pasco and Kennewick, has just passed their ordinance. And both cities have gotten two different types of changes. One of them, which you've got here on the dangerous dog. And they did a study and they said that the Chihuahua is more dangerous than a pit bull because they have more accidents, more dogs biting people. So, but it was interesting that they found that out. So I just was wondering if we went out and looked to see, you know, did a study ourselves.
So we did not. The RCW required change was to eliminate the breed-specific language. And so absent, there's other certain conditions that the state put into place. So it's, if you can, if you decided to leave that breed-specific language in there, there's a lot more requirements that the state would require of you as far as registering the dog, going through different behavior-type programs. So the language that we suggested is probably the cleanest language we can think of and make it easier for both the animal owner and the city to enforce our ordinance, was to just eliminate the breed-specific language.
Thank you.
So, Mark, in relation to the American Kennel Club Kingine Citizen Test, so how do people know that they have to do that?
So once the ordinance is published, it's a requirement under the, our city ordinance, it's posted in there. There's, I believe you can go to the American Kennel Club website to find out where you can take these classes. I believe they're held locally, regionally. And it's a, it's a behavior program-type class, almost like a dog obedience school.
Would we post anything to give people a reminder or an understanding what that means?
That's something we can do. It would be incorporated in the city code itself. And so what that does is it allows people, that language is for is if people have a potentially dangerous dog, they can show that it's now gone through this obedience course. And then it, the code would not require them to register their dog as a potentially dangerous dog for several years.
I think it might be a good reminder just to have something visible for people because not everybody's going to read the city code. And just to have something in place to give them a little bit of a?
A prompt.
Of a prompt, yes, thank you.
And since AVHS does our licensing for us, we'll ask them when they do their license reminders to, for people that are already have dogs that are potentially dangerous, to remind them of the provision for them to have their animal trained and bring that to their occasion.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just a brief one. Seeing as how we've taken out all the language about the breeds, how does somebody know whether or not they have a potentially dangerous dog?
It's in there.
Is it in there?
Yeah, it's, so prior to this change under city ordinance, if you have a specific breed listed under our ordinance, you're required to register it as potentially dangerous.
Okay.
There's other factors in that same statute if, that a dog can be registered as potentially dangerous if they've inflicted bites on, on people, if they've attacked other animals, things like that, that are already in statute and we're not modifying those.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mark, thank you. And I looked at the red line and it looks great. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now go to item B as in boy, Resolution 5477, Provide a Letter of Support for the Rapid Line, Rapid Ride One Line Locally Preferred Alternative. Hi.
Good evening. James Webb, Senior Trap Engineer, City of Auburn Public Works. I am here to present the proposed Letter of Support that city staff have drafted for the locally preferred alternative for King County Metro's proposed Rapid Ride I-Lin route through the city. So King County staff were here to present on the locally preferred alternative at the November 25th study session. Since then, city staff have drafted a resolution for council and the support letter. And there's also a map showing the proposed locally preferred alternative route that is in your packet. This is proposed to come to city council next week for adoption. So if anybody has any questions about the letter, please let me know. We also have Greg and Natalie from King County Metro to answer any specific questions on the Rapid Ride itself.
Now, is this going to be initiated in 2023 or earlier?
Right now, the schedule is for the route to start serving as a Rapid Ride route in 2023, correct.
Questions, council? Okay, thank you, sir. Good job.
Thanks. I'm going to stay put because I think the next agenda item is also.
Okay. So you'll be picking up Resolution 5478?
I will. So Resolution 5478 is for another letter of support for King County Metro for their Renton-Kent Auburn Area Mobility Plan. Again, King County Metro attended the November 25th study session to discuss the changes that are proposed as part of that mobility plan. And this is the resolution and then letter of support that staff has prepared to show City of Auburn support for that mobility plan and those service changes. So again, if anybody has any questions, again, King County Metro staff are here if you have any questions about the specific changes to service that are proposed as part of that plan.
Counsel, questions? Questions? Going once, twice? Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good job. And the mayor did, the mayor did a great job on those two letters, too. Okay, now we'll go to Deputy Mayor Selection Process, Annual Selection. Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council members, next week at your meeting, one of the things will be on the agenda is selection of the 2020 deputy mayor. We'll review with you Section 12.1 of your council rules, which you recently updated. So we want to make sure that we're still all clear on the process. The process for the nominations will be, any council member can nominate another council member and can nominate themselves. The senior council member, which right now is Councilmember DeCoursey, is automatically nominated. If Councilmember DeCoursey next week decides that he does not want to accept the nomination, the next senior council member is Councilmember Trump Manuel. We'll go through all of that next week. If there's only one nominee, then the rules do not necessarily call for election by acclamation. So we're still going to have to have a vote, affirmatively voting for a council member. If more than one council member is nominated, then we'll ask for a vote on the first one. If a majority votes aye, that ends the election. If not, we'll go to the second one. If nobody receives a majority, we'll start over again. And that's about it, unless you have any questions about the process.
Questions, council? I really, you know, we did our, we did our due diligence on this several weeks ago. And I think it's a good model. And I feel good about it because now it's something that is going to be left and hopefully be followed in the future. So there won't be any misunderstandings that we have had in the past. And, and we have some good, we've got some good base ground rules. And it should run smoothly, I feel, anyway. So, thank you, Steve. Appreciate your help. Thank you, council. All right, now we're going into the Community Wellness Discussion Items. And Councilmember Trump Manuel will take over the meeting to cover all of the agenda items under Community Wellness Discussion Items. And I promise not to barge into you like I have in the past because of my excitement.
Thank you, Mr. Pelosi, for handing over the gavel. And?
The gavel?
Number A.
We forgot the gavel.
I shouldn't have even said that. Anyway, we're going to start with A, Ordinance Number 6744, and that's with Mr. Tate. Oh, okay.
It changed a little.
It did?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Chris Barrick, Co-Compliance Supervisor for the City of Auburn and at the Community Development Division. And I'm here to talk with you about healthy housing and some changes, kind of a number three of a three-part series. Back in April, staff presented to council some options for healthy housing and some programs that were in other municipalities as well as ours. Also talked with you regarding what might work in Auburn. Staff also presented in August some recommendations moving forward and what those programs might look like here in Auburn. And tonight, after looking at the draft ordinance a little further, realized that I wanted to make sure we adhered to the single-subject rule. And so tonight I want to, I might be able to streamline it a little bit. The next ordinance up is, the draft ordinance is 6755, which is, I will kind of combine into the same presentation because they both pertain to each other. The first part, and your packet will be pages 20 to, I believe it is page 117 or 18. So a lot of pages in there. In the middle will be the National Healthy Housing Standard. And it's a document that we would like to bring forward next week for adoption as a reference to help fill some gaps in with the property maintenance, or property maintenance code. I apologize. And then also Ordinance 6744 to Restructure and Cleanup of ACC 1506 and 1520. And you'll see a lot of red line and crossouts in that ordinance. And what that basically is, is it's moving everything out of 1520 and putting it into 1506 where it's supposed to be and just doing a little bit of cleanup in that. And then moving into Ordinance 6755. That one is a little bit more in-depth, talks about Title 1, I'm sorry, Chapter 120, 515, and 522, which is our business license. And that's where most of the work was done with this. Prior to, yet, well, we haven't adopted it yet. So, so prior to bringing forward the National Healthy Housing Standards and the recommendations that were made in August, we were, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought here for a moment. It'll help give code enforcement the tools that are required and necessary to help with inspections for properties that are not compliant when it comes to multifamily properties. Prior to this ordinance, we would have to have a property referred to us by Auburn Police Department for us to require any sort of inspections, and those pertain to the exterior of the property. Moving forward, if the Healthy Housing Standards are adopted and what the changes made to Chapter 522, particularly if I can draw attention to 522057, which is on page 115 and 116 in your packet, that talks about the inspection process and what the requirements would be. If a property were to have three code violations in a 12-month period, we could trigger that inspection, which would include the interiors of the property, give the option to the owner to have that done with a certificate of inspection through an outside agency, not through the City of Auburn. And with that, I think it's just going to be a lot better environment for residents that are here in Auburn that are living in multifamily properties that maybe are afraid to make a complaint because they fear retaliation. And so with this, we would be able to initiate these inspections with those three violations, even if they were not pertaining to the interior of that property. But if they were pertaining to the exterior junk and debris, inoperable vehicles, tall grass and weeds, would allow us to trigger that. If they're not taking care of the outside of the property, then what are they doing with the inside of the property?
John?
Just so I get the natural order of these things.
Sure.
We'll first act upon 6744 to adopt the National Healthy Housing Standard, and then we'll act on 6755 to give you the authority to act upon.
Correct. And to stay true to the, the single-subject rule, that's why we separated.
I understand, I just.
Separated those out.
The order that we're going to get them next week.
Correct. Yeah, and that would be my recommendation is to come forward next week for adoption of those two ordinances.
Any other questions, Mr. Tate?
Chris, talking about 6755, it's just a minor thing, but on, on page 119 of 157, there was a delete of the police chief and the term director was put in there. Should we not identify which director we're talking about?
I believe in the definitions, we do define director, if I remember right, which would be on page? In your packet would be on page 109, would be about a third of the way down under B, 522, and it would be the 020B. Director means the Director of City of Auburn Department of Community Development.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? I just have a comment. This is great. I am so glad to see that we're giving you some tools to use to determine. But when you said about complaints, who gives, who does the complaining? Is it the tenant? Are they the ones that you're going to, if they give three complaints, do they give it to the code enforcer or the police department?
It, no, it would go to, for, for this portion, it would go to code enforcement. So it wouldn't have to necessarily be a called-in complaint. If we observe something on the outside as we're driving by a complex or a community and it's a code violation, that would be number one. If we received an additional complaint and it was validated and we opened a case on it, that would be complaint two. And then, once we hit that, after that third one, the following number four would allow us to go in and make that, yeah. So it's not something we have to have called in, we can observe it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Yes, John?
This is probably more for legal counsel. So you observe four violations on the outside, and that could give you access to the inside?
Per, per this new code, yes.
How does that work?
Sometimes. We're always subject to the constitutional prohibition on administrative warrants, but there are provisions for us to get warrants. So depending on what the violations are, if the fourth violation makes it a criminal misdemeanor, we would go to a judge and we would get a warrant. We, you know, we, the staff knows that they're not supposed to go into somebody's property. When it comes to multifamily residential, any tenant can give consent to view that apartment in any commonly accessible areas. So that's how we, we, we work through that on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Tate?
One other thing to add is, and this is going back to one of the prior staff presentations, some municipalities have implemented a across-the-board mandatory rental property inspection program. So there is statutory authority to require those inspections, including the interior of units on an annual basis. And if you recall, a conversation a few months ago was, how do you, how do you target where mandatory inspection should occur rather than applying the standard to every rental property? So some of it is, is what it, what it triggers that would cause us to consider that approach, all other factors and laws having to be taken into account in combination with that approach.
So this will come to us, both of these together, for us to, for the town?
Next week, yes.
Okay. Any further? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris?
Next, Resolution 5476, Mr. Tate?
Good evening. Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development. Resolution 5476 is a resolution before council and with staff's recommendation to approve or consider for approval next week at the December 16th council meeting. The effect of Resolution 5476 is to make a statement that would authorize pooling of HB 1406 funds. So let me step back and do a little bit of a refresher. Earlier in the year, the state legislature enacted HB 1406. And what that did was it allowed local municipalities to take action to recover a portion of sales tax that's already being collected by the state. So I want to be clear that that wasn't to add a tax, but it was an ability for Auburn and other cities to capture some of the already collected tax. The Auburn City Council took action on September 9th to adopt both Resolution 5454 and Ordinance 6732 that exercised that option. So after council took action, staff forwarded those documents to the State Department of Revenue, who has since acknowledged receipt. And we're very close to starting to collect funds through HB 1406. HB 1406 will generate for approximately 20 years for Auburn $150,000 a year. HB 1406 has limitations on what it can be used for. So in the agenda bill, I've outlined what those limitations are, but they all have to tie back to affordable preservation or acquisition of affordable housing. So acquiring, rehabilitating, or constructing affordable housing, funding the operations and maintenance costs of new units of affordable or supportive housing, and in municipalities that have less than 100,000 population can be used to provide rental assistance to tenants. So the recommendation within Resolution 5476 is essentially to take that $150,000 a year and to redirect it over to SKEP. Call it the SKEP acronym, stands for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. City Council signed resolution.
5408.
Thank you. 5408 on February 19th, 2019, which is what City of Auburn's action that eight other cities took action on as well to form SKEP under an interlocal agreement. Reminder, those cities that are part of SKEP are Auburn, Burien, Huffington, Des Moines, Federal Way, Kent, Normandy Park, Renton, Tuckwillan. And King County participates as well. The, the Executive Board of SKEP meant during their regular meeting on? The Executive Board of SKEP met during their regular meeting on November 25, I believe, it was at the end of November, and adopted or enacted a resolution as an executive board of all member cities in the county unanimously supporting a recommendation to bring back to all of the city councils, requesting and recommending that HB 1406 funds be pooled and directed over to SKEP. So this is not a unique request to Auburn. It's a request that would be delivered to each of the legislative authorities within all nine cities. Collectively, the nine cities would generate about $1 million a year for 20 years. That's pretty powerful and meaningful dollar numbers to be able to contribute to affordable housing solutions in South King County. So I think it's important to call out within the resolution that created SKEP, the interlocals that everybody... That all nine cities signed, is that pooling funds was an ideal approach to... For the nine cities to work together to address regional solutions to affordable housing in South King County. So... Because there's an option within HB 1406 to provide rental assistance, I have called out in the agenda bill why from a staff perspective, that's a challenging concept to implement. One, it would require us to have to create a program around how to figure out who gets that assistance, which means we're reviewing applications and considering, you know, personal circumstances on how we would provide rental assistance to individuals. Secondly, it's not a very sustaining way to use the funds. I don't want to undervalue what it would probably mean to an individual household to have that kind of assistance, but it's really one-time money. And from a staff perspective, those funds can be used to acquire property, to build affordable housing, to buy existing buildings, and rehabilitate and preserve for affordable housing. So we think that that has a longer-lasting impact in the world of affordable housing. And thirdly, you can only use those funds for cities that are 100,000 population and less. Well, within that 20-year timeframe, probably about 10 years from now, we'll hit that 100,000. So there would be a point in the middle of collecting those revenues where we'd have to stop doing that. So we'd go through a lot of energy to set up a program, only knowing that we would have to cease that program midstream. So I think the resolution lays out sort of the legislative history, the reasons why pooling is the recommendation. And I do think it's important to call out that within the resolution, we also state that Auburn can't be the only one that pools funds. So if the City Council of Auburn thought that pooling had value, it would be great to send that message out to our other member cities, but we also, I think, need to say that if we're doing it, the other cities should be doing it. So the resolution tries to kind of create that safety net, I guess, so that the City of Auburn doesn't find itself as the only one contributing funds to SKEP. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Just a comment, more than a question here, Jeff. On our Affordable Housing Committee, I represent Auburn, we have Dureen represented, Kent, and Renton represented. So the last... The message at the last Affordable Housing Committee meeting was for all the jurisdictions to look at creating either a SKEP or an ARCH-like program to pool their funds, because it does make sense to pool your funds to get the bond capacity to do more on that. Also at that meeting, we learned that over the last seven years, 2012, 83,000 affordable housing units have been lost in the region. And they're looking over the next five years through these various programs of adding 44,000 units in. So only half of what's been lost. So again, looking at this potential of the larger dollars, not only makes a whole lot of sense, but I think we're taking the lead as Auburn to express to the other local jurisdictions that because of that loss, because of the need, and because of the entity of SKEP, it makes all the sense in the world to go ahead and pool the funds. When you look in the handout here where it says the North County version of SKEP reports they have been able to leverage $20 million of funds to build and to acquire $220 billion of affordable housing, that's a lot. I made a comment at our last Affordable Housing Committee meeting was that all we needed was Jeff Bezos to write a billion-dollar check to the region, and we'd all be pretty good shape. That would solve all the problems, but we'd be in pretty good shape. But I don't expect he's going to take out his pen and do that. So looking at this again, as to that larger amount that we could leverage with our nine cities and to do the best we can, and to keep in mind that, as Jeff mentioned and Mira's mentioned this over and over again, preservation is the key. We even have looked at in our last Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, we're going to approach the legislature this short session for a supplemental budget to ask for another $10 million to be put in the Housing Trust Fund strictly for preservation. There's $10 million that they allocated last year, we're looking for another $10 million to double that number. May or may not happen, we don't know, but that's kind of the key. So I support this, I support the pooling, and I think we can be well on our way if we can convince the other cities to join us.
Any other questions?
I have to agree, I support it as well, because it shouldn't just be the City of Auburn leading this. I think we should have all of our neighboring cities as well to be able to give this kind of money, so I support it as well. Yes, Mr. Tate?
And I would say that I appreciate Auburn taking leadership on this as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? Okay. Are you next? Okay. Go ahead.
So the next item is Resolution Number 5479. And this too is a resolution that staff is recommending for consideration at next week's December 16 council meeting. Resolution 5479 is essentially a recommendation for a city council to support or direct some of the 2020 work plan efforts for our Human Services area of city government, so this is city staff and the Human Services Committee. In the packet, you have a resolution, you also have an exhibit that serves as the work plan, and you also have a cover letter signed by the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Human Services Committee. On the top of your packet, which may not be on the top of your packet right this second, but there was a sheet that was the Human Services Recommendation, which would really slip into right behind Page 138 of your packet. Apologies for having left that out prior to printing, but it should have been part of your packet when you received it, just more as an addendum. Recall that on October 14 earlier this year, there was a very positive joint meeting between City Council and the Human Services Committee. And the Human Services Committee, I think, was energized by the positive reactions of City Council, the information that was provided under the needs assessment that Cloud Burst Consulting provided that same evening. And after that joint meeting, the Human Services Committee had an October meeting, and they had a November 25 meeting as well. And during those two meetings, the Human Services Committee thought that developing a recommendation of a series of recommendations and put, you know, pen to paper on that and forward those to City Council for consideration. So that's what that supplemental item is that was external to your packet. And what the resolution does, if enacted, would be to kind of bridge some of the pieces of work that need to be done to further consider the Human Services Recommendation. So that recommendation includes a few different areas, includes a recommendation on funding levels, it includes how to prioritize how funds are directed, consideration of some administrative efficiencies or modifications if... So as a package. And the resolution, basically what it's indicating is that we should go and communicate with some of our other local municipalities. City Council's always interested in sort of knowing what the profile looks like within South King County and comparable communities. So that's certainly part of that recommendation. It also looks to find ways to better align how the grant funding cycle works and how city budgeting works. So right now, this is a good example, when we go into 2020, the Human Services Committee come March is going to start working on the next grant funding cycle. City Council will not have enacted the budget for 2021 and 2022 until later in the year. So they're operating off of budget assumptions, and we want to see if there are ways to remove some of the assumptions and get more into firm and concrete information and budget facts. So that's an example of an area that we want to explore. We want to look at funding sources and funding options and what the Human Services Committee and what the Human Services Group and what the city can do under different funding scenarios. So it lays out a work plan to try to make sure that, you know, one... I guess another area of consideration is because the joint meeting occurred in 2019, and it was a positive meeting, is to come back to council and seek an endorsement of this approach, which will inform the 2020 council on a decision-making time. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just have to say that I want to thank you, Jeff, and also the other ladies that are part of the Wellmood Committee, all the hard work that you guys are doing and bringing this information to the council. And I have to also agree that having that joint meeting, I found it to be very useful and also to be able to communicate with the people in that committee, in the Human Services Committee. And I just think that we should, as councils, should be able to meet like that, so that way we can know what's going on and be, like you said, have facts of what we're working with and stuff, instead of assuming that we're going to have this and be able to know where to go. So is there any questions from Mr. Holman?
The joint meeting we had, there were a lot of numbers thrown out, that they'd really like to go for 2% or 3% of the general fund, and that there was so much need. I see in your key recommendations that you've set a floor of minimum of 1% of the general fund. And I think that's wise, because our general fund is not static. It rises and falls, and so having a nice target is good.
Well, another thing that I think...
And I'm glad it doesn't say a minimum of 2% or 3%. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, look, everybody wants to do more in this area.
Yes.
And overcoming funding and budget challenges, that's something that council's familiar with, and there's a lot of competing interests. But I think that understanding different scenarios, understanding if it might take time under, you know, multiple budget cycles to get to a certain funding level, and also considering whether we want to remove that from a percentage-based approach to a per-capita-based approach, so that if... I mean, we heard from Cloud Burst that evening that when the economy declines and our general fund declines, that's when we're saying that our Human Services budget will also decline. And that might be the time where human service delivery is more key. So I don't want to... I mean, there's no foregone conclusions on what the best approach are, but feel that it's appropriate to kind of talk through a few scenarios.
Any further questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 5479, establishing a 2020 Human Services Work Plan. That was the previous. Okay, sorry. Neighborhood Program, 2019 accomplishments.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Joy Scott, I'm the Community Services Manager for Auburn.
And I'm Erica Kleist, the Neighborhood Programs Coordinator here. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we did in 2019 and some of the accomplishments and wins that we had over the year. So generally speaking, what we work towards in neighborhood programs is connection between residents and... As well as between residents and the city, just to develop community here and develop beloved place, which we talk about a lot. This year, we did that through a few different things that we're going to talk about. National Night Out, Civics Academy, Community Match and Grants are all programs that have been around for quite a while. And then we're also going to talk about some of the specific things we did in 2019 in the summer that were a little bit different. So as many of you know, National Night Out this year was a huge success. If you participated this year, we had 52 events registered in Auburn, and that's a great number, that's pretty average as to what we've been seeing the last few years. And we see them all over the city, which is something that I like. I like to see this spread where we've got them kind of all over. The other thing that we love to see is the events by resident type. We do have all different types of communities in Auburn participating. It's not just the single-family neighborhoods, and that's great to see as well, because we do see a changing landscape in terms of what our neighborhoods look like. They aren't always just the single-family homes. There's a lot of apartments and condos and things like that. So it's great to see that those are participating as well. On the staff side, we had 68 staff from the city out and about on that night visiting. So we divided into 15 teams to visit all of those 52 events in Auburn. We had some really great times, as you can see from the pictures, all of our departments were represented in those teams. The other thing that we did differently this year, we had Puget Sound Energy join us, kind of the way that Verfa has joined us in years past. So both Valley Regional Fire Authority and Puget Sound Energy were out as well, visiting neighborhoods and chatting with them about their services. And of course, we had the mascots, Sparky and McGruff, out and about as well. The kids always love to see those, and so do the parents. It's pretty cute. We hear amazing things from our residents about this program. Some of those quotes there, you can see, we do a survey at the end of the event every year, and the resident coordinators give us their feedback, and they really appreciated everything that the staff did, all of the information they brought to them. Just the fact that the staff were out there visiting and sharing what they do and asking questions and being able to get the answers right then, it's great to see this, positive feedback. Another program that we had this year that just finished up back in November, Civics Academy. Civics Academy is an 11-week course, and it's free and open to anyone that has a vested interest in Auburn. So this means that we see employees as well as residents and someone that might have a business or something. Anyone that really cares about Auburn is welcome to take this class. And the goal here is to engage those folks with the city, is to open the doors of city government, explain how decisions are made, explain what we do every day, explain where funding goes, and also explain how residents can get more engaged with their city. We do go over every single department and division in the city, and they get a little section to speak about what they do. So this is kind of an overview of what that looked like this year. This year, we graduated 24 participants, so that brings our total over the last four years of this program to 71. And this is another program where we get some really great feedback on that survey at the end. The residents that take it, the attendees, they are just blown away by the city staff that are there presenting. They're blown away by the fact that they take time out of their evenings and weekends to present, they're blown away by the competency and ability of the staff, and also blown away by their passion for the job. Especially this year, we got a lot of comments about how impressed they were with... Especially this year, we got a lot of comments about how impressed they were with how much all of our city staff love what they do and love Auburn, and that was great to see as Another program, the Community Matching Grant, in years past has been called the Neighborhood Matching Grant, but kind of what we were talking about earlier, that changing landscape about what a neighborhood is, we changed the name to Community Matching Grant. And this is a pot of money that's about $35,000 each year. And the idea of this is for communities to identify a project that they feel is important and that they need in their community. And they identify it, they bring it to us, they apply for funding, and then if they're approved, they go ahead and do the project, and then we reimburse them. And the matching can come in a few different ways. In this example that I have on the screen, Lee Hill Elementary School, they had a teacher pass away this year, and so they wanted some way to memorialize the teacher and help the students kind of through that process. So they decided to invest in something called a buddy bench in memory of that teacher. And so this project, they purchased the bench, and we helped pay for about half the bench. It's really just a space for kids to connect with each other, and it's a great project to see. We've had a lot of different things over the years. Really, the goal here, like we said, is to let people identify what they need in their community. So another one that we had this year, we have a neighborhood up in the Lakeland Hills area, and they're in a little bit of a unique situation because their neighborhood is actually on two different levels, separated by that hill you can kind of see in the background of that old neighborhood park picture. And so they were having trouble connecting to each other because of that separation. So they wanted to redo their neighborhood park to hopefully make it a more of a gathering space that they could really connect to each other and have a little bit more of that community feel. So they applied to us for neighborhood funding and received it to redo the park. They redid all the park, added in some hopscotch, and that lovely gazebo was added in as well that'll really help them have those events throughout the year to connect with one another.
Who did that?
This is the Lakeland Hills Estates HOA.
So their HOA did it, and then you guys just reimbursed them?
Yes. Yep. So this one was the match that they did, so the reason we reimbursed them the full $5,000 grant, they contributed about 109 volunteer hours to this project. So the summer in 2019 looked a little bit different. We did three community picnics in addition to three summer sounds and cinema events, so we hit all of our six areas of Auburn, which we have defined as the police patrol districts. At the community picnics, we had about 25 staff from public-facing departments, but we also partnered with outside agencies. So we had staff from Verfa, Puget Sound Energy, the library, and the Humane Society as well. And then the food service was between Kiwanis and Sister Cities. So it's really a great community effort to put these picnics on. And then in addition, we tabled at the farmer's market once a month and chatted with residents that were attending the market. And part of this tabling that we did this year that was a little different, we created a go-kit. So it's literally a box that's divided into a bunch of sections with information. So it's the Auburn Magazine, the Senior Center brochure, the Parks brochure, a Stay Connected bookmark that Kalen created, a few different city information things, some flyers about the different areas of Auburn and developments that were coming. And it's just an easy grab-and-go, literally a grab-and-go kit. So it makes it easy for staff, any staff, to table at the market and have information that may not pertain to what they do, but they have it there and can provide it to residents if they have questions. And it's come in handy already at a few meetings. Public Works has taken it to some of their open houses and have found it useful. So that's something we will continue to do in 2020. So overall, we had a really great year in 2019.
Yes, it sounds like it, it looks like it, too. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Pelosi.
Comment. So those are over-easy eggs. And the reason I mention that is because I have just talked my wife into doing over-easy eggs for me. They've always been scrambled because in my Navy days, when they served eggs, they kind of floated, you know, like this.
Are you talking about these?
Yeah, I'm talking about those.
Those are pickles and tomatoes.
Are they eggs?
No, it's on a hamburger.
Those in the black and white?
They do look like eggs.
It's okay, Bill, I thought the same thing.
They're over-easy pickles.
Well, Councilmember Pelosi and I are both Rotarians, and the hamburger was produced by the Kiwanis. So kudos to the Kiwanis from us Rotarians. Man, I thought those were over-easy eggs.
I did, too, so you're not the only one. Well, you guys are doing, our staff are just wonderful. I am constantly praising our staff, from our directors down to everyone that works for the city of Auburn because we do have a nice city and we are doing a good job. So thank you. Thank you, ladies. Any further questions? If not, thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Pelosi.
All right. So, so council, are there any other discussion items that you all want to bring forward?
Yes. I would like to bring two of them if I can share with the council. One of them has got to do, I would like to bring to our council about the signs that Watch Dog has put up in our entryway on Highway 18 and how they're not, the loadering is still continuing to be there. I've had several calls and people almost hitting these pedestrians that are standing there, and I did something I shouldn't have done, rolled my window down, and one of them jumped and came over to him and to me, and I just says, you know, there is a sign there. And he said a few choice words to me and flipped me off and continued to stand there. I know that I've talked to the director of maintenance from Watch Dog, and he put the signs, they came back out and they put the signs. So I would like to bring this to our council as a study session, if we could, on how are we going to enforce this if our state patrol officers are not dealing with this and if somebody gets hurt out there? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Yes?
If council would, our office can work with the police department to give you a memo about what the enforcement mechanisms can be because it's Watch Dog property and for a couple of other reasons. We don't have, there's not a whole lot of policy choices for council to make, but we can provide you some information about what our legal options are and some of the administrative processes there.
Okay.
So, so Steve?
Sir.
What are you recommending?
I don't have, my recommendation is instead of bringing this back for a discussion, it'll probably be more effective for council if we provide you a quick memo. And then if there's further on to the policies, we can have a discussion about that, or the chief or my office can talk to you.
You give us a memo?
Yes. Probably early next year.
Okay.
On the third?
The reason why I'm also bringing it is because I've had several constituents, you know, calling me or they approached me, what is the city going to do? And I tell them, Steve, like I told you earlier, the city can't do anything because it is DOT property. But since DOT has followed through with what they said they were going to for us and still things are not, things, the law's not being followed there.
Mark, do you have some comments on that?
Just need to make sure it was on. So what you're talking about is the no loitering sign?
Yes.
Which is something that we can't enforce because it is DOT property. We can enforce it because they're considered in the roadway. So we have enforcement tools that we can use for somebody who's in the roadway, same as the garden strip that's on Auburn Way South, kind of under the two overpasses. That's city right-of-way. We do enforce it when we see it. Unfortunately, we can't be everywhere at once, and there's other calls that a lot of time take priority over subjects who are soliciting money in those locations. We do try our best to stay on top of it, and a lot of times, unfortunately with that, the people who are there receiving a ticket, they really don't care. It's more, we have to enforce, if they're not leaving the roadway, a disorderly conduct statute, which is a misdemeanor. And so that would be the choice of taking them into custody for that. And so we try to use other options that we can, short of that, but like anything, we just can't be everywhere at once, and unfortunately, there's a lot of other calls that are of higher priority that we have to respond to. But I am aware of what you're talking about. The fact is, we can't, the only thing we can enforce is the actual no loitering because it is state property right there.
So would it, is this, would this be the state trooper responsibility then?
So it is an exit ramp from the state highway.
Yeah.
So state troopers can enforce loitering as an arm of the state because it's considered their property because the loitering itself is more of a civil issue that state patrol would deal with.
Even though they're on Auburn city limit?
So it's a, the no loitering itself is under a state statute-
Okay.
-for state property. So the property owner is basically dictating that you can't loiter there. We, as city agents, would enforce them being in the roadway, which is, if you're standing at the median at the Jersey Bears, you're considered in the roadway, so we can enforce that.
Okay.
So this, oh, it's John, go ahead, John.
Go ahead and finish, Bill.
So, I was mentioning a thought. Go ahead.
Well, let's face it, they're there because it works and they get money. If people wouldn't give panhandlers money, they'd stop doing it. So don't roll down your window to them no more.
Well, I didn't roll it to give them any money.
I know, but that's, I'll lecture you on that separately.
Lecture me later.
It's not safe.
Given the assistant chief's response, does council need any follow-up?
No. What did you say?
Given the assistant chief's response, do you need any follow-up? I'd offer to do a memo, but I think that covers pretty much what we would have said in it, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest putting this on the matrix for follow-up.
Specifically what, though? What's the question you would want staff to bring back and discuss with you?
Well, litter signs, freeway entrances.
So that's all state? There's nothing that we can do with that? That's all state.
See, and that is what Mr. Golden, Mike Golden, the director from Watch Dog Maintenance, he said that they have put people out there to man, man to count how many, how many times a person is sitting there. But they can't do it seven days a week and 24 hours a day. But yeah, they know it's a problem, and now they went as far as putting signs on each side of the roads, but they're still not being followed. You know, our loaders are still out there every day, and people are just concerned that somebody's going to get hit because the one in the median is so close. The cars are right there, and you've got two to three, two people sitting there. Yes, mister?
Bob, sorry.
It's purely a jurisdictional kind of a thing, and I think we've got a similar problem with the homeless that are occupying our metro bus stops. And, you know, I applaud our Auburn Police Department for chasing them out of there occasionally so that the people that really are waiting for the buses will be able to catch a ride and be in a safe area. But we've seen too many times, as soon as they go away, and I've even involved the metro police. But, you know, again, it's the same thing. You can't be, they can't be everywhere. But I think the letter or the memo would be, at least bring it back to their attention, and maybe they would contact their state patrol people to encourage them to enforce a little more.
So if a citizen calls 911 and it's a litter problem, how would, how would the citizen know that this is state patrol versus city? Most citizens probably think it's city.
For litter?
For, not litter, but-
Loitering.
Loitering?
Yeah, loitering. I mean, how do you work that?
Well, just like calling 911 for any issue, the call is logged and worked as prioritized.
Yeah, so there'd be two different issues. There's the loitering, if they're just on the state property itself, that's something the state would enforce. But if they're in the road, that certain area, if they're in the roadway, a citizen can still call 911 if they're creating hazard for the drivers on the road. We can respond to those. Like I said, that might get prioritized a little bit lower if they're just standing there soliciting money than, you know, an act of assault or things like that. It's just, it's a matter of prioritizing the response to that.
Will the APD, when they go there and see it's not our jurisdiction, will they call the patrol?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, Bill, if APD is able to respond to the call and the individual who is there is entering the roadway to collect money from people who are rolling down their window, APD can cite or arrest because they are in the roadway, right? So they may not need to call state patrol if they're able to do something in that situation.
But APD would call state patrol if it was warranted. I just, I'm trying to see how this doesn't fall through the crack. That's all I'm trying.
If somebody night called 911, it would more than likely come to us first because they're in the city limits.
Right.
If we get there and there's nobody there or they're just standing, we would move them out of the roadway as much as possible. The problem is then, more than likely, if they're making good money doing it, they're going to go right back there after we leave. And that's the problem.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, how would we follow up on this?
My concern, Deputy Mayor, is there's no, there's, I don't, there's nothing policy-wise or city code-wise for you to follow up on. At this point, we have all the laws in place that we can put in place. It's just a question of administrative resource and coordination between our police department and the Washington State Patrol. So I would hate for you all to put something on the matrix for us to come back to you next year and say, we're already, we already have all of the laws we need to have.
So that is one law that, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So that is one law that we cannot enforce.
No, we can enforce all of the city and state laws that we've adopted, but the issue of when they're on private property, we don't have jurisdiction. Where on the roadway, we do have jurisdiction. So it's a question of how the 911 call comes in, what the other competing response priorities are for the police department. But we have all of the laws we need.
The problem is that I see is that we have signs that say we're a welcoming city. I love my city. I like my city to look clean, but when those are our main entryways into our city and you see people loadering and trash all over, I feel like I'm not doing my job as having a beautiful, clean city and allowing these people to continue to not abide the laws. So I'm just saying.
Don't roll your window down.
No, no, I did, I rolled the window down because I wanted to bring attention to the sign is what I did.
That's a signal for them, they will automatically come to you.
But I just, you know, I want my city to be clean. I want us to have a good name of having a beautiful city, and to see that every day is just, I don't know.
John, Larry, Clark.
May I suggest, since you're going to be here next year-
Yes.
...that you use your bully pulpit to engage the public not to give money to loiterers at intersections. Might be more effective than trying to pass another law or get another enforcement arm.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I've been doing that.
Use your bully pulpit to say, don't roll down your windows, ignore them, drive on, they'll go away.
I've been telling the people that have been approaching me about, you know, almost hitting these people because they come so close to the barrier, and I've just says, well, I just, anyways, I have- And I've just said, well, I just, anyways, I have been using it. And I just don't want to make another law, but if we already have those laws, we need to enforce the laws. That's all I'm saying. Good.
Larry.
I'd just point out that I drive 167 every day. I get off on Fifteenth Northwest. And since those signs have been up, I can happily report that I haven't seen anybody there. And it had been a daily occurrence before. So I would say that it's been improving, so.
Good. Both what the gentleman just said, John, makes the excellent point of, you know, we need to be the spokesperson for disencouraging people from rolling down their windows and putting money out. I remember a time when the exit off 167 and Fifteenth, there used to be a gentleman standing there with a sign, didn't ask for money. He said, I'm not going to lie, I need a beer. Okay, so, you know, they're out there for all kinds of purposes. And the less we can incentivize them by not handing those dollar bills or whatever it is out, the more we can, we can, you know, have that go away. You go over on Fifteenth and all the way where Red Robin is and the Shell Station, there's always people standing there going into, you know, people driving to Walmart. And no matter how many people are at that stoplight, that light turns red, you constantly see the person running to the windows and the money's being handed out. So I don't do it, but others do. I understand they have a compassion for certain people, but, you know, we need to be the marketers of this, if you will, and do that effectively, as John said, so we can somewhere other, have people understand that this is not the proper thing to do. And you're right.
Bullying.
Bullying, and you're right. At some point in time, hopefully not, but I've seen the dangers going on on Auburn Way North at eighteen. And it's scary sometimes with the amount of traffic there and the way people are driving in and out of traffic.
We have a TV audience right here.
Yeah. They're listening. Okay, moving on, another one was our homeless shelter. I wanted to see if we could bring that back to our matrix on an update on what's going on since we've given you authority.
Once we have an update, we will provide it.
How about, should we put it on the matrix?
I can assure you that you don't need to put it on the matrix. We will be bringing it back as soon as we possibly can.
Well, regarding homeless policy, I ruttered around the policy on an email that was sent out today by Antoinette about the RPC voting, King County voting, Seattle council voting. So it shows everybody what has been voted on and approved. So check that out on the homeless.
For the regional homeless governance?
Yep, yep, yep. That's where City of Seattle is contemplating on putting in seventy-three million dollars in the pot and King County fifty million dollars in the pot. I don't know, Mayor, you probably can answer this, but all of the cities, the Sound Cities Association, are they going to come to us and ask for money, funding?
No, the argument that one could make is that the money going in from King County, a majority of that is generated through the cities in King County. So that money is already being attributed to the cities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I think that on the loitering, we had a robust discussion, and that's good. And thank you, Mark, for contributing. And thank you, Steve, for contributing. So back to the original matrix, item one, two, and three. Number one is TBD, number two is TBD. And I hope that, I forget that, item three, funding options, that's ongoing. Are there any other?
Just a quick comment on item number one.
Yeah.
We were originally notified during RTC meeting that Metro was going to make a decision on the Bus Barn location this month. They misspoke, and we thought they did because making a decision of that importance in a two-month period does not make any sense. So we have come to find out that the decision will not be made until like December of next year. So we have plenty of time, and this will probably be TBD for quite a while until they approach us. But one other comment, we did, and you'll see it in my notes, I just had Antoinette pass those out from the last RTC meeting. We did vote approval of the Mobility Concepts Report and Metro Mobility. And I provided an amendment to that motion that would require Metro to put together a proposal on how they're going to more effectively engage communities in their communication efforts related to items such as this. Pointed out to Metro staff that in some cases, we have had very good communication from Metro. For example, the I-line comes through Auburn. But in other cases, related to like the Bus Barn, we've had virtually non-existent communication from Metro to the city. So this puts them on notice that they have to do a little better job of engaging, communicating, and partnering as we go forward with some of these concepts they're proposing for cities.
So if I can just add to that, so we actually are starting those conversations with Metro staff on the Bus Barn. And currently, it's tentatively scheduled for one of the February meetings for them to come and do a briefing to council.
Okay, so that covers the matrix. Any other comments on the matrix, gentlemen, ladies? I do want to, I do want to make one comment, and that is, earlier this evening, Councilmember Baggett handed out the Skyline Leasing LLC terms for the Auburn Airport. And that will be coming up at the council meeting next week, so we'll be discussing that, right, Ingrid? Okay. So, everybody, it's six forty-five. Oh, yes, Claude.
One last comment, since this is our last study session of the year, but also your last study session. And, yeah, so, you know, and we'll do more formally, but, you know, thank you both for what you've done here. And I truly believe that when we moved from the committee establishments related to how we did our business as a council to the study session format, we made a very positive move and a very positive decision. Because in my opinion, this has worked very effectively, very well, and it's really facilitated our decision-making process. So I think we did a good job in moving from committees to study session.
Yes.
And I have to echo that, too, because when we first started, there was three of us in committees. And we were new, so the chair and the vice chair at the committee. So this has really worked a lot better. And Mr. Holman, thank you for helping me through my council time. I'm just not saying goodbye yet, but you have helped me out a lot and so has Mr. Pelosi on a lot of the things. You did, even scolding me just now about rolling my window down, that's okay.
Seriously, for your personal safety.
I will be here to continually remind you about.
But, yeah, I think that we all need to echo that about rolling our windows down. I, as a Christian woman, I know that I like to help everybody I can, but there's a limit. And I think that's a limit that we, to make our city safer and cleaner, is to not do that. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments?
Grab that gavel.
All right, we're adjourned.